Good evening. Our hearing tonight is on Senate Bill 52, the Wind and Solar Electric Generation Siting Authority and our process of implementing that to Madana County. This is our second of two hearings.
I'm going to be here in the electricity.
And then we will consider this formally at our Commissioners Meeting on January 4. So for this evening, we're really here to receive public comment. We've invited townships and other local organizations, governmental entities to come in and share their views, and so we're here to listen. Steve, did you have any other preparatory comments?
No, I'd like to put our record last week, we had this hearing, we had the individual intended discussing about legislative intent. Last, what's it, or this is the convention, conferences, and they had several presentations on Senate Bill 52, one of the forums, of all, actually, the bill sponsors, Senator Bill Reinecke and Senator Rob McCauley, and I suspect they asked that, what the legislative intent, and they were aware that what we're trying to declare their intent of county commissioners, county, county commissioners, declaring the entire unincorporated area of the county as being a exclusionary zone for county wind and solar development. So obviously, that's on the record, was the question, that was their intent, and they were sponsors, indicated at the time, too, that sometimes people vote for bills, and maybe that won't be their intent, can't say that everybody voted for it, it was still already had the same in mind, but I don't think the bill sponsors fully intended that the county be able to do that. There was a lot, like I said, a lot of discussion, we had a number of representatives of the solar and wind projects, and they're busy in other parts of the state, and they would prefer the counties don't do this. So I think formally expressed that by several of them, but generally, some other counties are considering very much similar to our approaches, but they're likewise looking at input from their communities and citizens as they're further ahead, they ought to take a similar approach. And in talking with them and formally with other Commissioners, they said likewise that they have a township, the residents, and I'm saying they'd like to maintain the ability to do this, they would obviously get that developed in a direction. But as Senator McCauley said in his presentation, these kind of projects are transformative. The reserves are much like a big land, a kind of large-scale land use change, they can transform a community significantly, we're talking about 1,000 acres or so, and I think maybe some of them is obviously awkward for clarity, wind projects, he's more attested to over there, but they are transformative, and that's why I believe is that the counties that was involved in planning ought to be involved in these decisions. So, yeah, so that's my.
Does anyone like to address the board? Yes, sir. Jerry, Jerry, come up to the microphone if you would.
Sure. Hi, Jerry Winkler-Gilford Township. I guess my question is trying to find, get an understanding of this, because what it, in reading the proposal, it takes all the say away from the townships, it puts it in the hands of the Commissioners, whereas I'm wondering, what, what say does a township have in this whole process?
According to the law that was passed, it is addressed with county commissioners, and county commissioners are the ones that are supposed to make this decision.
Okay.
Having said that, I mean, I think if we had a proposal that actually came to us for Guilford Township, for instance, we would obviously go to Guilford Township and say, what do you want to do?
Okay.
But the way the law was drafted, and the county commissioners didn't ask for this by.
Yes.
It was not something that was even lobbied for by CCAO, I think it just happened.
Yeah, I think it's, certainly it's something that needs to be addressed, needs to be looked at, and from my perspective, I'm not speaking on behalf of my fellow trustees, but, you know, I think the individual townships should be involved in that discussion, so.
I think too, if you look at the structure, the township is involved with it, even if the exclusionary zones are not created, because if they go to Ohio Power Siting Board, a trustee, as well as a commissioner, sits on that and votes on it.
Okay.
So the township does have that point, and that was the, that was one of the sessions talked about, the process of the hearings and so forth. Prior to this, actually, they had projects coming through where the local communities were 100% opposed to some of these projects, and it really didn't matter, because the decision was made in Columbus. So that was part of the compromise.
Okay.
Between Columbus and down to the township level, ends up at the county.
Okay.
So, I agree with you, but I think, that's why, I think it's important that we have these public discussions, and that everybody, you know, there's that involvement, because it's just not your township, it's also your joint townships, that would be impacted, so I think county level makes some sense.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I thought it was, ooh, I guess not, now it is, sorry.
Anyone else would like to address the board this evening? Yes, sir, please come up.
Hello, board members, my name is Jim Burns, I'm a trustee in Hinkley Township, I'm here representing myself and the township from a perspective of this Wind and Solar Generation Siting Authority. My opinion on this is similar to housing developments, where Madana County Planning Commission makes recommendations to the township, and the township can accept or reject those recommendations, I'm hoping that we move somewhere similar to that with this legislation, giving the township ultimate authority to do as the people choose to do in that region. I realize that these projects could be very large in acreage, and take up a lot of land, and maybe even impact a neighboring community, at which time, the township would be addressing that with the neighboring community and having that discussion. That said, when you go to vote on this, keep in mind that the ultimate power should reign with the people that live near those facilities. Eventually, we do need sources of power that are outside of oil, gas, coal, and it's going to come, whether we like it or not, it might not be this decade, but it's going to come in decades in the future. So giving us the ability at the township level to decide whether or not we want to take the Madana County Planning Commissions, or whatever commission this is for, and take their recommendations, should lie in the hands of the trustees and the township. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Again, we didn't write the law, and the Township Association from a state level may want to contact their legislatures and see if they can get it changed, but the way it is drafted currently, it is, it rests with the county commissioners. And as Steve said, there is a power siting board that is also involved, that does have representation from townships, but it, yeah, so our proposal here is to basically exclude all of the unincorporated areas of the county. I would tell you, just, you know, we had a gentleman here that wanted it to be a little more selective, perhaps, or a little more open, in our last area, and from an economic standpoint, but I would tell you that the companies that are going to tend to do this kind of development are probably not going to be too concerned about zoning and the local laws, they're going to come in, even if we declare entirely Madana County off limits, if they want a site in Madana County, they're still going to come here, and they will go through the process and apply, and Jim, I think at that point in time, the townships would be heavily involved, at least from, you know, our standpoint, in at least making recommendations and giving us feedback in terms of our decision-making, so that we can make a decision that's in the best interest of the local township and the community as a whole.
I do want to point out that you're talking about utility scale, which is 50 megawatts. There are smaller ones already in the county, Wattsworth has smaller, this doesn't affect them, this is only 50 megawatts and more, and typically, those run like 1,000 acres or so, I guess, depending on how big they want to go. So I think what, what you're talking about here is, these huge scale ones are the ones that are basically, they have to have the electrical infrastructure in place to do this, so there's only, currently, only certain areas of our county that this could actually happen. I know, and I've shared it publicly, that Lorraine Madana Rural Electric, in talking with them, which cover about a third, they have not been contacted by any project or any, anybody in this, obviously, they would have to work with them, so at this point, they, they're kind of already excluded from any possibility of this, but by the time they go through the process of studies, couple, several hundred thousands would have, dollars would have been expended, before they even start talking to a property owner. So at this point, I think it sets it very clear, we're going to have to eventually deal with the locals, since the county has the ability, the county commissioners have the ability to set this, I think that's our message, if, should they approach us, they would be working through our Planning Commission, which likewise, which involves people from the township, the representatives, and would work with the normal process that we do at the county level. So rather than the county commissioners making the decision, we would be looking at the Planning Commission and the local communities to make that decision, should there be a project, and in which case, conditions can be set, and such as road use maintenance agreements, landscaping, stormwater, and others, so those are, those, but you're doing it upfront, rather than after they've already expended nearly a million dollars to build the project, and in which case, the only latitude you really, the only leverage you really have in that is actually at the Ohio Power Siting Board, to set those conditions. This provides us the opportunity to set that early, in which case, we could have the input, much more closer, input, and we're closer to our public than a state board that are, some have characterized them as being bureaucrats, but I won't, but that's all right, they're, you know, they're public servants, they've been appointed to do a specific function, and that's your job, and with the addition of a commissioner and a township trustee, ad hoc into those, into those votes, you do have local input that way now. So it's expanded quite, quite a bit better than it was before. It's not perfect, but because it was a compromise, so I think all sides didn't like it, so therefore, that's what they were able to get the votes through, but they know they needed to do something, so, but I think our approach is, I characterize this, this is like my father when I was growing up, he said no, and anything I wanted to do was first no, and then, and then you could do, go to yes with conditions, it's the same thing here, we say no, but we can get to yes with some conditions, that I think would be reasonable, should the township and the, and the, obviously, the property owners want to do this, then some reasonable conditions could be set aside early on, before they end up going to a state board, which would likewise be looking at the, setting the same conditions, but these would take precedent.
Robert, I don't want to put you on the spot, but Wattsworth has two solar fields, how big are they?
Yeah, one is over six megawatts, and one is over three megawatts, so we have almost 10 megawatts.
And how many, how many acres do you know that they cover?
Yeah, the first one is around 38 acres, I believe, and the second one is 10 acres.
They're, they're an industrial park, are they not? Or it's the one?
They're in industrial areas.
Industrial areas, I'm sorry, yeah, industrial area, yeah, okay.
Got you.
Yeah, are they ground modded, roof modded, combination?
They're, they're ground modded.
Ground modded, yeah.
Ground modded.
Seville, Seville, for somebody who's not taking a look yet.
You drive by it.
Well, I mean.
57 and Seville Road?
So how did you fare in the wind the other day?
Yeah, okay, yeah, which was good. One is at, let's say, 1048 Seville Road, the other is at 10,000 Ripon Road, so, yeah, they're, you can go look at them anytime. The one on Seville Road has tracking devices, so they essentially move with the sun, it was a large enough project to do that. The other one on Ripon Road, that's next to the, next to the winery, vet center, it does not have tracking, it's fixed mountings, it's just the economics of that side of the project, that's on the surface side.
Those are solar?
Yes, those are solar, yeah.
How old, how old are those?
They are two years old, 2020, and they both went to operation, one was in February, one was in June, okay. They've been great projects, they're, they're low-impact projects, no sound, no traffic coming in and out of the site, there's actually a lot of, I'd say, positive feedback, questions and comments.
Sure.
Questions about those, those things, I just got an email last week from another community, there was something similar.
So how much of total electric load for the city of Wattsworth do those provide?
Yeah, so it's around between 5 and 7%, and so they're 10 megawatts total, which sounds like a lot, because, for instance, the city of Wattsworth, kind of, normal load, normal daily load around here is 45, peaks up to almost over 60 in summertime, whenever it's hot and it's generating, but, so 10 megawatts, wow, that's a big, that's a big portion of that, but you have to remember, solar obviously generates wind during the daytime, because it's hours, so there's, there's a smaller load factor when it's producing around 20%, 15 to 20% is good numbers for those types of things.
So, and this particular bill does not apply to the municipality, so the city of Wattsworth can continue doing whatever they want to do inside their jurisdiction, in the village and so forth, but this only applies to unincorporated areas of the county. Anybody else?
Are there any statistics on how many of these larger systems are in place in Ohio?
There's a few in the south.
I know there's thousands.
Well, actually, as we speak, there's never been grandfathered, I think there's a total, I'm going to get 20 or so, that there are actual projects either completed, was recently, or being in, that Senate Bill 52 did not take effect, in other words, they're already been processed. Some, many of them also have a tax abatement, which is a separate provision of the code, which Commissioners have the ability to provide a tax abatement for those, because they obviously have a higher value, and there's a cap as to how much they pay. Some have actually been constructed without tax abatement as well, so it's, it really is up to each county, and of course, what the proposal, proposals are. Some have, and in those projects, they have what are called pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, so they end up paying into some kind of like local fire department, or some kind of responders, those kind of projects, and that's where the county, counties get involved with supporting those projects. So there's some other benefits to it, that have nothing to do with the payment of taxes, but do provide some benefit to the communities, so, but that's, that's why you have the locals, and I think that's what Senator McCauley was saying, this is really about the locals having much more influence than they had before this bill, and that was, that was the legislative intent, was to make sure that that input was there.
We all appreciate that, we all appreciate that, recognize that, they want to give local control.
Yeah, well, industry would, the industry would prefer that they, they kept it with the Ohio Power Siting Board exclusively, but that wasn't going too well in the northwest part of the Ohio, where they have a lot of the wind projects, and so I think, and solar got added in towards the process, because solar saw similar complaints and similar concerns, and they decided to come in early, and at least know what kind of process they were facing, rather than as some separate bill dealing with it, so that's, as I understand from the lobbyists for the solar industry, that was their decision to sign off on this, and they're fine with the bill, they're just not crazy about the idea of a county doing it countywide, they prefer to come in and, I guess, pick and choose, working with the locals.
You mentioned solar and wind, you know why they chose solar and wind, there's no mention of nuclear, natural gas, hydro, any type of other generating facility?
Well, the reason why, because according to Senator McCauley, like I was indicating, it was because they had all these projects, he's from Napoleon, which is up north, northwest Ohio, and so is Senator Reinecke, and they've had so many of those projects, and they literally have transformed those areas, and you've got a lot of the winners and losers, the winners being the property owners with the big win, with the win, and the loser being the people that live next door, and so there's, where the townships, like I said, they would have projects come in, through there, and 100% being opposed to it, and yet, the Power Siting Board was still allowing them to be put in, so that's what pushed on, that's why they picked on these, they weren't involved, because they've not really had any similar kind of discussions or issues with those kind of, those are, I mean, they are impactful, but I don't think as impactful as the acreage taken for both wind and solar projects. And I, there was someone representing, another individual that was close to the housing industry, real estate and so forth, and indicated that their preference, too, when they, some of the large housing, housing developers don't really care for moving into townships that have a lot of these already there, it depreciates their investments, apparently. In long-range planning, when they're looking at townships to go into and develop, they prefer a more approach to planning that takes all these kind of things into consideration, they prefer to make their investments where, you know, small, unimpact, low-impact projects are fine, it's these large scales what they're afraid of, especially if they've got, when the amount of money they invest in these huge subdivisions, they really wouldn't care for, you know, a big windmill project popping up next door.
Is it wind or is it solar too?
Solar too, it was also solar.
On that, for instance, on the large solar.
The amount of land needed for some of these watts.
Yes, exactly, it's, well, I think the answer is because they're competing for land use, and these are very lucrative, $1,000 an acre, plus an escalator clause for 30 years, plus more, and they pay off the CAUV, so for a farmer, it's great, so guess who has to compete against them, it ends up being the, I'll just say, the developer, and for them, they're saying, well, that's just going to raise all their prices, plus decrease the value of what they have in terms of their development, apparently, they, from their marketing perspective, they think that's not a, so I, I guess it's a two, it's a two head of coin for them.
So is there anyone that represents a township that would like to have their township accepted from this?
I would.
So you, you would like to have large-scale wind and solar?
We'd like to have the ability to decide whether we want large-scale wind and solar, whether we want to or not, you know, wind's probably off for us, because it's probably the better soup for off on the way to the state of Ohio, but having the ability to decide that, which county and hopefully, if it was a presidential, I mean, my commission would, and I'd rate it as a recommendation.
So, so it would, it would be the commissioners basically drawing an area on the map that says that we're going to exclude it in all areas of the county, except Hinkley?
Well, I can't speak for the other townships that are not here, it's a big result, we're going to lose.
Well, we had other, we had another meeting last week, we had, we had votes.
But I don't know if there was any trustees at that meeting either.
The other one.
Yeah, the other, yeah.
Okay, then I missed the form.
Oh, no, we had Palmer, there was actually a majority.
Litchfield was there.
Litchfield was there as well, yeah.
And Palmer's still a very large farming.
Right, and actually.
So they now, our Jake, we're just.
Sure, right.
Again, I don't, I don't know what the problem is with keeping government smaller, allowing the local government to make the ultimate decision.
Well, the, the local government won't have the ultimate decision, the county commissioners by law can set it, obviously with the input, but even if we keep it as a zone that would permit, it really is the Ohio Power Siting Board that makes that decision, and eventually, obviously, you have one trustee that would sit there, as well as a commissioner, and in all cases, you still have the ability for the residents to referendum the issue. They have the ability to, that's the ultimate, I think it's 8%, if I recall correctly, of the registered voters since the last gubernatorial election, would be able to referend an issue for that.
This one is actually an opportunity for the township to override all other government and accept that option that we're considering.
But understanding that there's not, as the law is written.
If there's only a referendum opportunity, there is.
Well, not necessarily for the township, I mean, the government, so it would be a voter referendum, so you'd have to have, actually go out.
Get the petition signed.
Yeah, get petition signed, but, but that's not, but that's not, Jim, if I understand what you're asking, you, you are, you seem to be suggesting that if the county commissioners were to somehow abdicate their responsibility for this, that their statutory that they're now required to perform, that somehow that's going to fall back to the township?
It's not.
And it's not.
No, it's not, we're, we're.
So, so I guess my, my question to you is, is, you know, we have to draw a map of, here are the unincorporated areas of the county, and, and, you know, here are the areas that it's excluded from in the entire map, or if there are areas in a township that wants to have these sorts of projects, you know, we could put it on the map and say that large-scale wind and solar is allowed in, for instance, Hinkley Township.
Yes, that's fine, it's all, we have the same end, and we don't, maybe the township would like to be able to consider large-scale solar, not have it excluded from, we can probably.
But, but, as Steve was saying, the board would have the, not the commissioners, they would go to the utilities board for the ultimate say, if you were excluded from our map, correct?
The commissioners would have the ultimate say.
Right, no, no, I'm talking in this scenario.
Right, but if we, that's right, yes.
It still has to come back to the commissioners.
Right. Well, remember, we, commissioners are elected by the same residents as you are, as the township, we represent them, and I can just speak, you know, from my experience, if we would have property owners and a township come forward, what's this exclusionary zone, we can, by a simple vote, reverse it and say, okay, sure, we can now include, if you want to, if you include that, if we do get a petition from the Hinkley Township trustees between now and January 4th, or when we decide, we'll be taking that into consideration. So, I mean, that's, that is why we're doing the, the public hearings, that's why we are discussing this, and I, I can say it probably is a moot point, given Hinkley and where you are on the grid, I don't think there's even a facility that, there's a large-scale investment would have to occur before you'd be, have a high-power tension line going through, I don't think there's any that go through Hinkley or a substation, so.
I know that Hinkley really is on the map for large-scale, because there's not a large section of land.
Probably correct, yeah.
There are large farms, they're probably, they're on a large-scale, portion of scale.
Like I said, the Lorraine County, the Lorraine, Lorraine Madana Rural Electric Authority is already, and conversing with them, they have no problems at all with us passing this, they've indicated, no problem at all, they've not been approached by any developers, don't have an interest at this point, and should they come up and say they've got property owners and the township want it, then we, the board of commissioners could easily just change and go, okay, there you go, and, but conditions could be set, too, mindful of what the, the local property owners, as well as the township, wants to add.
Yes, Paul?
Paul, just from the township, so even if we're included in the exclusionary zone, for, for areas, for years and well, for years and well, somebody comes in and wants to set up a little winter, solar, they come before you, your board would still have the option, like trustees, and, and could possibly still accept something like that, if it's accepted by the township and the board, correct? It's not, just because we're excluded now, doesn't mean we're excluded from it, right?
Absolutely correct.
And, and as Steve said, it gives more control for conditions.
It gives two boards to get conditions on it, instead of one board to get a condition.
And I would suggest, I know we're kind of, we're moving forward to do this by, by January, but the commissioners are, with this authority, would be able to start setting up that procedure now, and by resolution, and then be in discussion with, obviously, the Planning Commission, a process, should a township and property owners want to be out of the exclusionary zone, and be, be open for it, that this is the process that you would, you know, we'd ask that you follow, and that could be adopted not only by us, but also the Planning Commission, and here's a process that would involve the townships having a say, and based upon that. So I, I think we're open to it, and I, there was, forgive me, but I'm trying to remember which county commissioner I was talking to, I have to verify that, but he was, he indicated, what they were doing is they were setting up a moratorium, they were going to take this action, but they were limiting the amount of time, and they're going to spend some time in the meantime of evaluating something similar to what we're doing, is if they have a proposal, here's how we're going to process it, and I think that's reasonable, but at this point, this sends a signal, hey, wait for, wait, we don't want this right now, maybe in the future, there might, we might want a, a large scale, but at this point, they're, they're building, they've got a number they're building right now that are, him and grandfathered in, and have had no local conditions placed upon them, other than, you know, what they voluntarily have worked through the Ohio Power Siting Board.
And I truly appreciate being able to apply technical conditions, it makes a big difference when you have a project like this, and, well, if you have more boards looking at it, more boards be able to put a little bit of power on the companies going in and try to.
Well, many of our townships are starting to look at their comprehensive plans, and maybe this is something, as they're going through, it's, go ahead and identify the area, because we just don't have to do it by township, we can say, all the township except for this area. except for this area. And in which case, you, in effect, as a township, could say, okay, this is the area, if you're going to do it, this is where, this is where you can do it. And I think that that's just better community planning, just as you do in zoning. This is our rural area. This is our rural residential. This is our business. This is our industrial. This is our commercial. And so this affords every community to start, township, start to do this now. Some are starting to do their comprehensive plans, and so now's the time to update. I know Hinkley, and this would be an issue, I think, for, as you're updating your operations. Do you have an area that should be open to it? Okay, bring it up and identify it. In which case, obviously, in the future, we could consider that and evaluate it and take it through planning and say, okay, makes sense, because you've taken the time to get the input from the public, looked at the implications of it, and likewise, then moved forward and signaled like, okay, if you, if you want to have this large-scale public utility, this is the area of the township we would prefer.
Haven't had to navigate through the choices of pipeline and compressor stations that are involved in that. I, for one, am grateful that we have an opportunity to be involved in this kind of savings. It's much more likely than perhaps it happens.
Than that, that's, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, that was a federal process, yes, yes. Indeed.
Anybody else have any thoughts they want to share? All right, now we will adjourn our hearing. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We appreciate your input and see what happens. Thanks, Robert.
Thanks.
See you tomorrow.
See you tomorrow.
Did Bethany talk to you?